Okay, everyone, can you put some in your seats? We're about to begin. All right, thank you. Thank you. Good evening. I'm Virginia Peresusa, a member of the League of Women Voters of Santa Maria Valley, serving all of North Santa Barbara County. And I would like to welcome you to this forum facilitating the meeting. As we begin our meeting of democracy in action, let us begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan nonprofit founded in 1920 as women want the right to vote. However, for many years now, our organization has been open to both men and women. We are strong supporters of the election process and encourage citizens to exercise their constitutional right to vote. The League wants to encourage voters with as much fair, impartial information as possible. The League has been invited to facilitate this solving city council forum by community volunteers led by Susan Williams and by the organization sponsor, WeWatch. We would also like to thank all of the candidates for their willingness to participate. That's from District Three, we have Mr. David Brown. We have Ms. V. Louise Smith. We have from District Four, Elizabeth O'Ronan. And we have incumbent Mr. Robert Clark. Thank you, candidates. Tonight's candidate forum rules call for adherence to the terms of civil discourse by both candidates and the public. A hallmark of democracy is the willingness of all members of our community to treat each other with courtesy and respect, not just the people we agree with. It is in that spirit that we are here this evening to engage in applied part of our democratic process. And now I will introduce tonight's timers from the League of Voters. We have Sandy Boyd. And from the volunteers from the community, CJ Williams. CG? CT! Sandy has paddles to display to the panelists. One for one minute, one for thirty seconds, one for fifteen seconds, and one to stop. So the format we'll be following is this. Each candidate will answer two questions provided to each in writing previously, followed by a fifteen-minute recess when questions are question sorters, and that would be Ian. Ian is in the back. And Susan, also in the back for WeWatch. They will pick up these three-by-five cards, and they will sort your questions to be directed to all the candidates. We have time for seven to eight questions. These questions will each have two-minute time limits. And finally, each candidate will have a two-minute closing statement. And we want to remind people that there will be no video or audio recordings of this meeting, and no still photography to be taken unless it's authorized by the sponsor, and no editing of the video that will be recorded for YouTube of this program by the League of Women Voters. So now we begin. And we'll ask these questions in an alternate first-come process. So we're going to start the evening with question number one. And David Brown, you'll have three minutes to answer this question. What skills and experience do you have that will aid you in being an effective city council member, and why are you running?
Thank you, Virginia, and thank you for everybody for showing up tonight. I'm excited. Got my first entree into politics, if you will. And I've been on a number of different boards, nonprofit and profit, both. And the job of being a city councilman is being a steward of the resources and assets of the community. And having that responsibility and that stewardship is something I've done many, many years for a number of different organizations, including the Forests, the Rotary Club, and our church, and Little League Baseball, and a number of different organizations. When asked of what temperament you have to bring to the city council, I said, "Are you kidding? I umpired Little League for over ten years. There's nothing you can throw at me I haven't seen already." So I'm here to help and be part of the solution and offer ideas. My business background and acumen, I think, leads itself well to be a representative. Many years as a small business owner, finance and real estate, and also medical supplies. And so it's been a fun career, and a lot of that has been financing homes in Solvang and throughout the area, which has been a joy and a pleasure to help people get into their home. It's a little more difficult today than it was when I first started this career, as you know, with the prices and everything else coming up. But I came into the race to add my acumen and experience to the benefit of Solvang. I take that very seriously and look forward to being of service to the community as a third district city councilman.
We'll hold our applause until the very end. Next, V. Louise Smith.
Hi, thank you, Virginia. Thank you all for being here and for the opportunity for me to share with you who I am. I see many of you that I know, and it's great to see their faces here, and I also see a lot of people that I don't know. And I just want to introduce myself. I'm V. Louise Smith, and in the real world, V stands for Victoria. But while I'm running for city council, I really hope that V stands for victory. I'm running for the District Three seat on the city council because I really care about Solvang and I really care about this community. I've had the opportunity to work in this community for over eighteen years, and I've had the great pleasure and good fortune of calling Solvang my home for the last thirteen years. I have, as Dave has, served on both nonprofit and for-profit boards in Santa Barbara and in the valley, and I've had to make those hard decisions that boards and council members have to make. So I feel that I've got the skill set to do that for this city council, and I understand the process. I have a bachelor's degree in sociology. I was a family counselor and a child advocate for many years. I have a master's degree in business administration with an emphasis on leadership and management. Did a little stint in law school for a while, but we won't go down that road. As a small business owner, I've had my catering business for over eighteen years. It's been very successful. I rely on both the residents and the tourists in this community to keep my business going, to hire me and my company to provide them with food for their events, to provide them with a wonderful celebration, again, with food, because that's what my life is about. I also rely on local businesses to help my business thrive and operate. So I'm relying on businesses for flowers and equipment and staff. So I rely on the entire community to keep my business going. I understand the unique needs of Solvang and the balance that is necessary to keep our residents living here, keep them working here while they keep the business doors open. And the people of Solvang keep our tourism thriving, keeping those tourists coming back to our valley over and over again. Solvang has many challenges ahead with the drought and the need for affordable housing. I believe I have the qualities and skills necessary to help our community reach those goals by being the voice of District Three. Thank you very much.
Does this sound okay? Okay. I'm Elizabeth O'Ronan. Thank you all for coming out and participating, and thank you for the organizers getting us all together. Elizabeth O'Ronan, I'm a resident of Solvang since 2014, and hopefully this is my last stop. My entire family now lives in the 805. I have a family in San Maria, a family in Yeltsin, and a family in Santa Barbara. So thrilled to have the opportunity to represent the residents. So I'm simply a resident of Solvang. I don't have any ties to local business or special interest groups. I do bring thirty-five years of experience in the IT industry, IT professional, and a leader in my business. So I have a deep experience in the business world and have spent those years working with some of the largest, most influential companies in the world, really bringing complex solutions to the businesses and to a number of people to help them solve business problems or technical issues and come to winning solutions with diverse points of view and diverse requirements. I also know how to simplify those complex issues and find creative ways to solve them. We have a few that are facing Solvang and like to participate in some of those solutions. I've also had a leadership role managing several people, many of them international, direct reporting responsibilities. And I've also had leadership roles in women in IT, STEM organizations. I run various STEM organizations nationally, so bringing young women and children into the technology business. And I've also been an ambassador for diversity inclusion in international groups for my business as well. I think this election is unique. It's the first of its kind for Solvang since we've moved into district formation. And that means, it doesn't mean that any of the issues facing Solvang are very district-specific. I think the issues really are common across the entire city. We need to face them. What's interesting about structure in the district is we can now have a councilperson that represents you, you know who to call, and can put advocacy and voice to the issues in your neighborhood or the concerns that you have, and I'm ready to do that work for Solvang. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert Clark.
I'm honored to be up here with a lot of fully educated people. I'm probably the dumbest person that's ever been elected to office in the country, but I've worked really, really hard. I've been a Ventura County, Santa Barbara resident for thirty years. I've been in the same house in District Four for seventeen years. I have spent four years as a member of the Solvang City Council. I was on the Planning Commission for seven years, and of those seven years, I was the Planning Commission Chairman for four years. I am currently the Solvang Rep for the Santa Barbara County Library Ward because books are my passion. I didn't pay enough attention when I was young, and I have about fifteen hundred books in my library. And I love to read, and I'm very well-read, but I'm just not that smart. So libraries are the most important thing in the world, but I'll get to them. I was the vice president and secretary of the Danish Brotherhood for years, plus their bartender. That was more fun. And I was the vice president of county baseball here in the valley. I've been on the Board of Directors for the Santa Barbara Contractors Association. I was the president of the Solvang Union High School's Aquatic Boosters Organization, and I personally raised every penny for the Girls and Boys Aquatics Program for four years. I am currently a lecturer. I have been a lecturer for twelve years at Ole Miss and Santee Enas. I even have a list on my flyers of the twenty or so organizations that I have worked very hard to raise money for, serve on boards, and donate to. My family follows in their dad's footsteps. I've got a daughter who spent years volunteering with Carrie at the library, and I've got a son who worked very hard with Hidden Wings for years. Alan is a double major at UCSB and a graduate, will graduate this year with an economics and accounting degree. And my daughter graduated at twenty from University of San Francisco with a double degree in political science and legal studies. So on my website, it says, "God bless my children that fell so far from that tree." Because education is so important. So I'm so proud of my family. And my wife volunteered at Solvang School for eight, ten years. In fact, she's even done some work. She was in the Ukraine, or in Eastern Europe, in Poland, in the Ukraine, I've been refugees. Oh, my God, a minute. I've been to conferences up and down the state. I've met with elected leaders all over the state. I still keep a touch of thirty or so of them, from San Diego to Eureka. I've sat down with the base commander in Space Base in Vandenberg. I've sat down with the people at Diablo Canyon to really understand the electricity needs in this state. And I've met with Eric Daniels several times. And if you get elected, gosh, tour Diablo Canyon. It's one of the coolest things in the world. I have a great relationship with Holly Sierra, Dave King, Art Mercado, and John Sanchez in Yeltsin. We work very well together. I rely on people that are smarter than me, like Jim Lewis up in Hismo Beach, and Mike Brown, who was the county leader in Santa Barbara for years. I know where to go. I know I'm not the smartest guy up here, but I know where to go to get the answers. And I wish that I had more time to talk to you, because I've got three pages here. But I'm about service, and that's all I can say. Thank you.
A quick reminder, when we're answering questions, we do not address other panelists.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Now, for question number two, we'll start with Ms. Smith. And the question is, this is one of those questions that all have had previously in writing. What is the top challenge facing the city of Solvang, and what is your proposed solution?
Oh, thank you. We have many challenges facing us, but I think with the drought, the issue of our water independence is forefront. Currently, we rely on both state water and our local wells, and we really need to ensure that our wells are working and look at other opportunities to secure water sources through research, education, communication, and understanding. This is going to take some time. It's going to take some financial resources. Our current situation is affecting all of us, residents, businesses, and our tourism. We can't really grow and expand and welcome tourists if we have limited water to offer. But while we're looking at those water sources, we need to continue to conserve water. I know there's been talk about a water moratorium. That's an option. There's talk about potentially a building moratorium, which is also an option. Fines are now being put in place, but unfortunately, some consumers will continue to use their water who can afford those fines, and others might be pushed into a position of possible hardship because they can't afford those fines. And if they have to pay those fines, it might mean that there's no food on the table or gas in their vehicles. So water conservation is an ongoing situation and will continue to be so since we live in an area severely affected by drought and falling rain levels. We need more permanent solutions. We actually need infrastructure to help build a system to reclaim and recycle water. But again, this is going to cost money, but it's going to help the citizens of Solvang in the long term. It's going to help establish water independence and keep us a tourist destination. By ensuring water independence, we can ensure responsible growth for our residents, businesses, and tourism. There are some other cities that have invested in infrastructure and have saved millions of dollars, one of which is Las Vegas. They actually are getting to the point where every drop of water that goes through a drain or a toilet or a shower, it's saved, it's recycled, it's reused, it's reclaimed. There's a small island up in British Columbia that there's only eight hundred residents, and they're all getting together, and they're talking about how they can filter their water from doing dishes into their toilets just to save water. They don't need to save it because they've got so much water up there, but they're just being good citizens and good people. These are two vastly different analogies and situations in areas that have vastly different populations. But I think cities and towns and residents need to come up with creative ways to save water, because that's going to help us and help our residents, and it's going to keep our tourism thriving. So we need to be creative and come up with some ideas that are going to work for all of us.
Yes, Ms. O'Ronan.
Thank you. Well, I would really like to respond with, there's two really main areas of issue that I think are the top priorities for the city of Solvang: water and planning and development. And water, we can talk probably about all night, and we should. It is really the only thing that, water is everything. In fact, when I called one of my friends in Santa Maria, who's a former city councilperson, let him know I was thinking of running, after he asked me what kind of crazy I was, he said, you know, "Really, water is everything." And I think the city of Solvang really has to be very forward-thinking. We need thought leadership about addressing our challenges. The costs, the cost increases and the subsequent drought-related penalties couldn't come at a worse time when many of Solvang residents are already experiencing a cost-of-living crisis. The penalties in particular are really prohibitive, and the strain that I hear from so many residents is very real, that the increased costs and the burden of making the twenty percent target, reduction target, is really unreachable for many or unaffordable for most. The city really needs to, I think, is considering rolling back those penalties, at least for businesses, and we should for residents as well. The penalties that relate to the usage or your overage that are a function of your volume really probably cannot withstand a very big challenge from Proposition 218, where those penalties must correlate specifically to the cost of the service. So there's much work to do there, and we have to get very aggressive about water reuse, recycle, searching for alternative sources, which include well water, but also groundwater, reuse of stormwater, and water runoff. So these are programs that we have to put in place. We have to inform and educate the community and ask for formal adoption of these kinds of programs. We all have to conserve. That's an underlying assumption. We're obligated to do that as citizens of California. So getting those twenty percent targets, we should, as many have already made that effort, but we all need to continue to do more and then solve for this really precious and required vital resource. That relates to planning and development, which is the second issue that I think faces the city. The city has pressure points on other resources, like the streets and roads, traffic, parking, and planning and development really has a... Planning and development has an impact on these crucial arteries for traffic flow. My position is we should put a building and development moratorium on multi-unit or multifamily dwellings, any net new developments, until we resolve and understand our fully conducted traffic study, and until we resolve that we have the right, proper water sources to accommodate the increase in population and the increase in visitors that that would draw. Traffic's a big issue that I hear from all of the residents. We have one north-south artery and one east-west artery, so any additional pressures from hotel or multi-unit dwellings, even low-cost housing is a big challenge. These are difficult problems. But we have to properly assess the impacts and how it affects residents and visitors alike.
Mr. Clark.
Thank you. When I saw the question of what are the top challenges facing the city, for me, I knew we would all be talking about water. But I was debating on, I think that equally, one of the biggest issues is how local cities and municipalities deal with the state mandates that are pushed out of Sacramento without much thought about how it affects the cities. I won't go into too much detail, but I've been interviewed by two national news programs and on one national news podcast about, they call it David versus Goliath on Fox News and Steve Hilton, but it's how do cities deal with what Sacramento dictates to you? And it's very, very difficult. So that is one of the issues, but the other one is definitely water, and we're all going to talk about that, because somebody a few months ago said, "What's the biggest issue in Solvang?" And I said, "There's three: water, water, and water." First of all, we don't have any state water right now, to correct that. We rely, first, on state water. We were taken down to zero to five percent, and now technically we're at zero. We have two hundred acre feet left of state water. That's all that the city of Solvang has. So, and if anybody's saying they're going to lower your water rates, it's not going to happen. And I've done some research since the last six months. No city has ever lowered water rates. What they'll do is when the hydrologists and the studies come in, they'll do a five-year plan, and you'll get a five percent, and an eight percent, and a ten percent increase. And then some cities amongst the state where things have gotten better, like our 1993 miracle, and I'm going to get into that, because that's what started this whole boondoggle, and it cost the city of Solvang six million dollars. We made this great deal with the state because everything was dry, and Kachuma filled up in a week and a half, and we did try to get out of it, and we sued, and we lost, and we appealed, and we lost. And we've got one or two more years before, if I probably be corrected on this, we've got one or two more years more of paying off that boondoggle. But I'm hoping for another March miracle. It could happen, but I think we need to prioritize water sourcing. We need to enhance pumping west of Alice Hall Bridge. We've tried before to negotiate with ID1, and it was pretty difficult because they were asking for the moon. They were asking for a two-for-one payback on what we're going to get from ID1. I believe it's still on the books that we've done the books. It's still a possibility, and they might be more amenable, because we are in a drastic situation. So renegotiating at least to under retail rates, because we're paying retail rates from ID1, and if we can get that down to wholesale, we'll be a little bit better off. And two-for-one, real talk, was a joke. There's other options like block trades with other state water users that might not be using all their water that we can explore. No one's ever silted any reservoirs. There's two reservoirs, Lake Kachuma, that have never been silted. Lake Kachuma's never been silted. The Army Corps of Engineers has never addressed it. I believe that it's time to talk with the Army Corps of Engineers to discuss silting and decreasing our water capacity. Plus, the soil, I've got distracted by a one limit sign. The soil that comes out of those silted lakes is extremely valuable, so there's a dollar amount that's going to be associated with that to alleviate some of the costs of silting. We've got two new wells coming up, one in Hans Christian Anderson Park and one in Creekside. One's a year and a half away, and one's three years away. So we are making progress there. I've been getting a lot of complaints about, "Why is all this water running into the ocean?" It's not running into the ocean. It's running to the wells. It stops at the bridge on H Street in Alice Hall. Oh, I'm sorry. So we're not letting any of the water out of Kachuma get into that river. I believe in incentive, not penalizing for waters. I've been against this, the penalties that people have been paying. I don't mind people paying more for rates, but I don't believe in incentives. Delita tried this with the moratoriums, got sued by the state, and that ties back to the state dictating, "You've got to do this." Delita tried to do a moratorium.
Mr. Brown.
Thank you. It's, I don't know how the fourth district representative knew what I was going to talk about, I didn't show my notes, so... But I too think that water is the issue of the day, the night, tomorrow, and the next day with regards to our opportunities for water and the use of water here in Solvang. We know it's an issue. What are the solutions, and what can we do about it? I don't believe that you can conserve your way out of a drought, particularly when you have a twenty percent one year, another twenty percent the year after that, and twenty percent after that. Now we're down to forty percent of our use three years ago, and we're going to be asking each other, "Where'd you pass the pass law?" each other, where'd you pass the, the pass the law on water? I think that from a solution perspective, we need to enhance our storage capacities. We need to explore more wells. I think we should open dialogue. You know, it's been bad blood between City of Solvang and San Jose River District 1, but I think that's part of the pun, water under the bridge. So, and I also think that there's opportunities to buy water locally from people that have surplus such as perhaps purchasing water from Alisal Ranch and others, that infrastructure's close by, it's available, and those are options. So I'm for exploring those options and providing a stable and reliable source of water through Solvang.
Very good. All right, now we're going to have a 15-minute intermission. You can go to the back and have some cookies, you can pick up some literature on the pros and cons of the propositions in the back of the room, and you can submit your questions. If you haven't written them already, you can write some questions down and Ian and Susan will pick those up, so when you have a question ready, you can raise your hand or take it over to the back table, whatever you wish to do. So we're reconvening 15 minutes.
Yes. Now I really wanted to answer because I actually found it really offensive, you know?
Well, there are, I'm not sure they can answer, but there are two people here who were on the city council.
Please take your seats. Mr. Clark? All right, very good questions here. So we have, we'll have time for seven to eight questions. Each question will have two minutes. So the first question, we'll start with Liz Smith this time. And this question is, how are you funding your campaign and who are your top three contributors? We'll start with Louise Smith.
Okay, so V. Louise Smith, V. Louise Smith, V. Louise Smith. I'm funding my own campaign right now. I would like to accept some donations, but right now it's 100% me. If I do accept donations, I will be scrutinizing those to see who's donating and asking why they're donating and if it is a significant amount of money, I will definitely want to have a conversation. I just think that small donations are best for my campaign, but right now it's all me. But thank you for the question.
Ms. Ronan?
Thank you for the question. Great question. I started out my campaign self-funded and have since received some very generous donations from residents and residents-only. As I've stated, my position is resident representation. My top three contributors are people in Alisal and Alisal Glen and the Mobile Park have contributed. I'm terrible at not remembering their names, but they will get very, very long thank you notes. And I think I've collected just shy of the $2,000 barrier for my campaign. One more thing, I will not, like Louise, I will not accept a donation from a business without some deep scrutiny. Probably, they'll probably do as much vetting of me as I would do of them. I really would like to maintain a transparent agenda.
Mr. Clark?
Do you want names or you want just the businesses?
Names would be great.
Folks, there's a form, form called a Form 460. If you're financing your own campaign, you fill out a Form 470. If you're accepting donations, you fill out a Form 460. When I was first asked to run in 2018, I said, "Sure, I'll run, but I'm not paying for it. I work in a lumberyard, so I take donations." So I'm looking through my, glad I brought this, I'm looking through my 460. I've taken over 35 donations. I've got one teacher, two builders, two mortgage people, one CPA, two military, one firefighter, two business owners, one homemaker, one winemaker, one boat builder, one judge, one law enforcement officer, one marketing consultant, the lady that cuts my hair, two contractors, one candidate, an investment advisor, two restaurant owners, a doctor, a dentist, and a psychologist, and four retired people. Some have come from San Simeon, Cambria, Los Alamos, New York, Seattle, North Carolina, Santa Barbara, Santa Maria, et cetera. The largest donor I have is a builder. His name is Ed St. George. The second largest is a good friend of mine who's a CPA in Santa Barbara, his name is Cole Servantes. I think David Brentz donated $1,000. He is a, he is a restaurant owner and he was also at my renewal of my vows wedding back in 2010 at the mission. And, and this is all public record. You have, anybody can go into the city. I took a $4,000 donation in '18 from a gentleman in Mort Park that owns gas stations and, but he also is a builder, has no building in the valley whatsoever, but I was in the pocket of builders. So I'm not in the pocket of builders. I take money from anybody because I can afford to finance my own campaign, but I like to serve. Thanks. And it's all public record.
Mr. Brown?
I have filled out one of those 460 forms and I've been very blessed. I have a website that was developed and it has on there a place for donations. And I've been blessed by people who have come forth and offered to give money for the campaign. The largest investors are, oh, I'm not saying investors, the largest donors are all business owners and individuals in the community. And if you want names, I'll let you look those up. I wouldn't mind doing that on a public forum. It is available. And, but they're all business owners and residents in the community.
The next question, we'll start with Liz Ronan. It is, the Hispanic community is 52% in Solvang. How are you going to make sure the Hispanic community is represented?
Great question. Thank you very much. Actually, my district probably has a large portion of those Hispanic members and residents and I was pleased to get to know and meet some of them. I'm first off, very, I listen and I think communicating with the community is extremely important. I don't speak Spanish, but I recognize that Spanish is their first and primary language and oftentimes we need to be conscious to not listen, not just listen longer, but take the time to have a translation either written or verbal. This is actually a personal topic for me as recently became a partner in a translation mobile app company. This was serving the deaf community, not the Hispanic community, but speaking multiple languages and finding the right way to communicate is a deeply personal priority for me. It turns out my roots are Hispanic and I think I understand the culture personally and very well, so you won't find anything less than 100% outreach from me and 100% support.
Mr. Clark?
I help with lumberyard and about 40% of my customers are Hispanic. I wish that I would have brought the voting data because it breaks it down by district, et cetera, and Hispanic representation. And I think the biggest issue that Solvang has and a lot of cities have is that the number of registered voters in those communities are very, very low. And if there's anything that anybody can do would be an outreach. I know some maybe don't have their citizenship yet. I married an illegal alien and she got her Dream Card and she still is not a US citizen, but, and so she can't vote. So, but I know how difficult the process is. It's got to be, there's something's got to be done to get more Hispanic people in these towns, our town, anybody else's town, registered to vote and get them more involved in the process. Do I have an answer for that? I don't know. Before I moved here, I was in Huana Wato, Nuevo León, and Monterey every month for years. I speak a little bit of Spanish. I think that I understand some of the needs of the community here because I talk to people at the lumberyard every day and there's a lot of builders in town that are Hispanic. But I think the main priority for the Hispanic community is outreach and getting more of them registered to vote.
I'm fortunate enough that on my website, I actually have a whole page that are in Spanish for the outreach and to educate our population, those that have English as a second language and guys like me that speak hillbilly. So, you know, it's different for everybody, but it's, they're a valued group in our community. The things that they do and we're blessed to have them as part of our community and anything that I can do to assist and be part of that is a great joy to me to be part of that. I do have a lot of people that I've had the pleasure of working with who, English is not their first language and it's very rewarding. So, and I just don't make any true distinction between them. They're just another, one of God's children and I'm going to try and help.
Ms. Lynn?
Thank you. Being in District 3, we have over 50% of the population is Hispanic and I have been walking door-to-door and what a great pleasure. I have met some of the most incredible people that are my neighbors that I've never met before. Being a chef, I have worked in kitchens and have had the distinct pleasure of working with a lot of Hispanic, amazing people, and I am still shocked that I do not speak Spanish. But I've met so many wonderful people and I am determined to represent them. They are in my district and I want to help them. They've got some issues that are very important and I want to be the voice for them. I've got a huge backing with the Hispanic community. I'm so appreciative of that and I'm going to do everything I can to help their voice be heard. Thank you.
Next question. What would you do to address the need for affordable rent in Solvang? Mr. Clark?
This goes back to one of those deals with the state, where the state mandates that you build in a city that's 95% built out and we have a height limit of 36 feet. So, I, this is a vote getter, I don't have an answer for that. It's more between a rock and a hard place, folks, because the state tells you you need more affordable housing when you have no space to build it. There is that one development down at the old lumberyard that's going to have four units that'll have eight, I think $1,800 is the price of the rent there. I don't really care so much about the hotel, but if the state is pushing affordable housing on us, it's interesting though, I guess apparently they built a mock-up of that $1,800 unit hoping that they would get younger, or business owners to maybe rent a block of six of those apartments so their employees could live and work in Solvang. And 90% of the people that came to the open house were over the age of 65 looking for some affordable housing. So it's just, I hate to say, we need to study. We need, we need to look into this, but folks, that's all I can tell you because I don't know where we can go when the town is built out 95%. We have height limits and where do you put affordable housing? I think AD uses a step in the right direction, depending on how they get used. I think maybe, you know, maybe putting the reins on some of the Airbnb kind of stuff could be not a solution, but something to be looked at, but I lose. I'm a loss, I don't have an answer for where we're going to find that housing. It's just something we need to keep working on.
Mr. Brown?
I would like to challenge anybody here. I think there's 80 people in the room. If I were to ask you what is affordable, I'd get 80 different answers. So to say what's affordable to myself versus somebody else is a misstatement and it conjures up all kinds of ideas. As far as affordable rent, I'm a market-driven kind of person. The market should dictate those things. I'm not a, I'm not pro rent control. You won't see that. I don't think it brings about the right consequences or the choices that you have from the rent control. I've seen it when I lived in LA. It doesn't add anything to the value of that home or rental unit. So the market should be doing most of that. There are a lot of resources that I think people don't know about, whether it be Section 8, whether it be other subsidies that exist through state and city and county levels. And I would like to have more of a cash, cash being informational cash source for that information to anybody that would like to have it and to have it in multilingual languages. But affordable housing is different for every one of us and the market is such, and I've had the pleasure of helping a lot of people in housing, so.
Ms. Lynn?
We definitely need some affordable housing and I agree with Councilman Clark that we do need to do some research and we don't have all the answers, but I believe that there has to be some type of incentive that can be provided to a landlord for a tenant that is willing to possibly sign a long-term lease, maybe some kind of rebate or a reduction in rent for someone signing a long-term lease. Excuse me. And I also believe that any project, any building project that comes to the city council does need to have some kind of housing element included in it, whether that's small houses or if it's apartments or anything, but there has to be some element of housing brought with that projected or potential project that somebody wants to build. But I really do believe that we can come up with some kind of incentive. I know there's some state and city and county options that need to be looked into and I certainly will spend more time researching this and come up with some better answers, so thank you. So, thank you.
You think this is a rising issue for us and we need to pay attention, affordable rent and affordable housing. They're actually complex issues too because the increasing costs of things like utilities, insurance, taxes are all burdened costs that get rolled into rent or rolled into an HOA fee. And most of the people that I've talked to in my campaign have experienced some increase, really very recently. I think we need to also pay attention and one of the residents I spoke to actually is the representative for the California Association of Realtors who shared some information that was interesting that we are noticing in Solvang, longtime landlords are actually taking advantage of increasing housing sale values and selling their properties. And they're getting out of the business of being renters or landlords because it's getting increasingly difficult to meet the costs. What does that mean? It means new buyers coming in, whether they're third-party corporate entities or new owners, general owners, personal property owners. They have a new cost basis if they're buying new land and new rental units today, which necessarily means the rent will go up or their cost basis has changed. This is gonna become an issue for us and I think it's a complex issue and housing and affordable housing must be in all classes. As Dave was mentioning, really affordable housing is gonna be a function of, you know, what you're able to pay. But I think we have a very diverse community that's on fixed incomes, median incomes that are relatively, you know, they're conservative. And I think we've gotta pay attention. Last thing I'll say is if we, if we cannot find places for our workers, sorry, they need, people need to work and live in the same city. Mr. Brown? This question. The city wants an increase in sales tax that's on the ballot. How would you support these monies to be used?
It's a hypothetical until such times as it's passed, I'm afraid, but 1%? You're talking about Measure U, I assume, if I can take that?
It wasn't on the card and I knew nothing about it, it looks like.
I measure U as a 1% increase in sales tax for the city of Solvang. First of all, I don't like more taxes. I've not, I'm a novice to the political thing and I've always been on the check-writing side for paying taxes, not regulating what they should be. But I don't like taxes in general, but I was informed that the sales tax increase, that 66% of the sales tax revenue to the city is from tourism. So, that the sales tax increase would bring us to par with surrounding cities of Long Oak, Santa Barbara, and the like. So, the fact that our residents would be paying about 33% of a 1% increase for those, and the services are for additional city streets and general services is my understanding for sales tax. So, I would say that probably would be, it's probably time for that to be passed. I would be in favor of it at this juncture.
Well, my understanding of Measure U is the 1% does not apply to groceries and prescriptions, which I think is a positive. And most of that money coming from Measure U and that 1% increase will be coming from tourists. As I mentioned earlier with the housing, I think some of that money could be funneled into incentives for landlords, it could be funneled into rebates for tenants that are renting, want like a year lease. So, I can see some of that money going towards that. Some of the money could be used for infrastructure because we always have issues with roads and parking lots and everything. I think it would benefit the community to have that 1% increase. A lot of cities have implemented that and we're looking at now an 8.75%. That's what Santa Barbara's tax rate is. So, it's not out of line with any other city. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Measure U, I've actually done some research on Measure U and agree with whatever, everything else that's been said so far. I wouldn't advocate that Solvang voters consider yes on Measure U. It does increase our tax from 7.75 to 8.75, which puts us on par with almost every city in the state of California. And I believe Measure U is on the other remaining cities in the valley on their ballot as well. The question was how would the money be used and, or how would we determine how it's spent from the city council? The city council does govern the use of this excess income in the general fund. And it would probably put about $400,000 annually into the general fund, which includes some governance from community council. So, there is at least a level of governance that would be, would include resident participation, which I think is important. The, most of the, also been said that most of the contribution to the increase would come from out-of-town visitors who are spending money in our, in our local businesses. But I do believe that those funds should be directed for services that the residents benefit from. So, if it's things like a supplemental water fund to offset some of the increasing costs or promote water conservation programs, if it's for increasing or improving our parking access, those are two good examples of where we should direct that spend.
Thank you. I have read and studied about California politics since Earl Warren was the governor and I just, I apologize and maybe this is unpopular with some people, but I don't think the taxes are the answer to anything. That's kind of the way things have gone in California. Whenever there's a problem, we spend too much money, we raise taxes. And I received an email from a constituent and he goes, what's with this 1%? Because I thought you were the fiscal conservative. And I said, I didn't, I don't endorse Measure U. I impugn those to Measure U. What I endorse is the residents making that decision on their own. I don't think the city council members are leaders. We're not supposed to be leaders. We're supposed to be representatives of the community or the towns or the districts that we live in. So, I support Measure U being on the ballot. Great, folks, if you want to add more taxes to yourselves, go right ahead. I don't agree with it. I'd rather, I'd rather $4,000, I'd rather save some money. I don't think taxing is always the answer to anything that ails you. I'm, I'm sorry, I just don't. And when they, they talk about, well, it won't affect seniors because, gosh, you know, it's, it's not groceries and it's not, it's not prescriptions. Like, oh, I didn't, that's, seniors don't buy toilet paper. Seniors don't buy paper towels. Seniors don't get their cars fixed. Seniors don't go out to dinner? Excuse me. It affects everybody. So, if anything wanted to go on a, the only thing I, a tax that I would be okay with, if the tourists are the ones that are always creating the biggest demand in this, this town, then fine, raise the TOT. I spent two days in Long Beach, I spent $160 for two nights in taxes on my, there were six different taxes for different things, fine. Raise your TOT. If it's a tourist that causes all the problems, then let them pay for it, not the residents of Solvang.
Next question, Ms. Smith, you'll lead off. Please give us your thoughts about the urban growth boundary and the vote it gives Solvang residents when the city wants to expand its borders.
I really don't have an answer for that, unfortunately. I will have to do a lot more research on that, but I appreciate the question and, and thank you very much.
Yeah, I think there is a project that is being reviewed to annex some land to the city of Solvang. I think we have to be really careful about, we've all talked about it this evening, what is the pressure on our limited resources? So, expanding the boundary of Solvang, still, I would take the position I took earlier, which is we need to be thoroughly diligent in making those decisions on what pressure it puts on our already existing pressured resources. Water, traffic, parking are the obvious considerations.
Okay, I was on the council that agreed and approved with it because the residents wanted it. Urban growth boundaries are very interesting because you, I mean, obviously you don't want hotels, there was a meme going around that showed a Trump tower in the field across from Buell Flat Rock. And there was that debate going on. That's one extreme versus the other. The thing, the way I look at urban growth boundary is, and if you're looking at the Alisal in particular, the Alisal, whether you like it or not, is Solvang's bread and butter as far as TOT goes. So much of our tax dollars come from about five different properties. The Alisal wants to annex about 40 acres. Okay, do you want those tax dollars? Go, nobody can see, do you want those tax dollars going to Santa Barbara or do you want those tax dollars going to Solvang? So, that's my position. If the voters want to restrict growth, I'm fine with that. No, I don't want to see a Walmart in between here and Buell, but to me, it's up to the residents.
Mr. Brown?
The urban growth boundary, it needs to be mutually rewarding for both parties, whether it be the city or the annexed property. So, it wouldn't make sense to bring on something just to have those liabilities associated with it. What does it bring if we do annex it? Does it bring more taxes? Does it have a water well on it? Does it have, you know, there's certain reasons that we would do that? And that would be, you know, up to the population as to, or the voters, as to whether that would be significant or the right mutual benefit. If one party benefits and the other does not, the transaction will not happen typically. Okay? So, then a lot of negotiations throughout my tenure and there needs to be two winners at every transaction or it won't happen. So, if it's mutually rewarding for the city in the way of taxes or other benefits and it also helps us meet those mandates that the state's put on us that Mr. Clark eloquently suggested. So, I think that all these things are on the table and should be discussed if that, if those options present themselves. Yes.
Ms. Smith? And Ms. Arona will begin the next question. Now that we have four districts, how do you plan to ensure that your focus doesn't become only your district voter's interest? Good question, thank you. I think that all, it's hard to describe an issue that would only affect my district, although I am listening very closely and there are some things that clearly are geographically driven, like the questions around the bypass. It's been kicking around for several years and also the intercity bike path. Those are two, I think, district-specific issues that I've heard quite a bit about and I will be very vocal and advocate for what my residents care about. But I think the things that you've heard me talk about this evening with regard to planning development and with regard to water clearly are well beyond just district concerns. I think there's quite a bit of alignment in what the folks in my district are thinking about and what the rest of Solvang cares about. So, I don't think I'll be traveling too tight a path on them, on those items.
I hate district elections because everything that I've ever done in four years on the council, when anything comes before the council, was to think what's best for the most residents? What serves the most residents? And we all, we're a town of 6,000 people and we all share the same, a lot of the same goals. One of the four scenarios that the consultants brought to us had the Alisal Glen and Creekside in the same district. Okay? Do you think Creekside might want to bypass to alleviate some traffic? But do you think that doesn't? So, I'm really happy at least that those two districts are not connected and the districts are at least put together the way they are. I think it's a candidate's obligation because those, you know, if you take 6,000 divided by four, you've got 1,500 residents, how many are voting age? Okay? You're being elected by the people in a district. Your obligation is to those people. That's why, that's why I don't like it because it's like, I'm not, I don't really care what happens in Skid Mason, I don't care what happens in Creekside, I just care what happens at the Ranches San Diego mobile estates. So, you know, hopefully there's a balance that what's good for the goose is good for the gander, but it is, it's the representative from District Three's duty to represent District Three and the needs of the people in that district. So, if I'm elected, I'm going to work really, really hard to fulfill the wishes and needs of the people in District Four. Do I agree with it? No. But I'm not the one calling the shots, you know? The other, the people in District Four are the ones that, obviously I have to, if I'm elected, I have to adhere to what they want. It's not what I want because I'm not a leader, I'm a representative and there's no better definition of representation if, than with a district. So, what are you gonna do?
Mr. Brown?
Thank you. Great question. I can't tell you how many people I've run into that don't know where even end districts anymore, that this is new and whatnot. And when we go into a little deeper discussion, I find out that, oh, we don't need that, why do we need that? So, not everybody was for it, but it was pretty much mandated by government above our pay grade as to having districts. So, we have them, but there's also that saying that good fences make good neighbors. I'm not real keen on that. I think neighbors, if they're good neighbors, they don't need fences. And I really, I have a disagreement here, but we, we have, for example, my proposed district would be Oak Street. Well, the people north of Oak Street would be one and the people south of Oak Street would be another. I'm not gonna sway from one side to the other because there's a street that divides you. They're Solvang citizens, they're my neighbors and I'll look at it from a global perspective. Yes, I'm elected by the people in the district and I'll fight for them as well, but not, not throw anybody under the bus to do it.
Well, I certainly want to be a good representative of District Three, so I am going about and talking to people to find out what their issues are and want to bring those issues to the forefront of the city council. But I do believe that there are issues all of us are facing and we'll try to do the best for all residents. We are all dealing with water issues, we're dealing with traffic, we're dealing with growth, we're dealing with housing. So, there has to be a balance with everybody, but of course I want to represent District Three. So many of the people that I spoke with, again, had no idea that we were in districts. So, there are a few concerns that may be unique to District Three that aren't to the other districts, but I think there are so many issues that are just affecting all of us that we, we need to address. But I will be a very good representative for my district as well.
This one, we begin with.
I haven't gone first yet.
Okay, your turn.
I'm ready.
Is there any solution to the increased traffic in and through downtown Solvang and alternate traffic routes used by commuters?
Next question, please. I've, I've heard many, well, when I first ran it was the bypass, then it was the I've heard many, well, when I first ran, it was the bypass, then it was the traffic flow. It's funny, when I was a planning commissioner back in 2012 and '13, I had this really altruistic feeling like, I want to get together with Buellton and San Ynez, because we're this hour last, right? And Buellton doesn't say no to anyone on Buellton, right? And so, I would talk to some Buellton leaders, and basically, folks, it was pound sand. Okay, fine, so Buellton's out of the question. I don't have an answer for what we can do to alleviate, well, there's one way in and one way out of this town, unless you want to drive up to Nohue Falls. We're not going to widen that street. I will say this, though, that I think that the traffic that we received in 2020 and '21 during COVID was about as bad as we're ever going to see it, because people were not traveling, they were coming to Solvang. People were not flying to faraway places, they were taking advantage of coming up to Solvang. So, when people talk about the parking and the traffic, I get it, it's a problem, we locals, I'm never forget this, when I first moved here, years and years ago, I was at Luminary Yard, and, I mean, before I moved here, I was traveling all over the world and driving all over Southern California, and this fellow says, somebody said, well, maybe you can go to Harrison's Hardware, and they'll have you. I goes, I'm not driving all the way over there. I'm like, wow, that's only two miles away. But I know what it's like trying to get across town and take my kids to soccer practice and take my kids to baseball practice, and getting through town, and it's farmer's market, and that's just the yellow light that's going on, and people just wait and go, and, you know, folks, I don't have an answer for the traffic. I don't think it's going to get much worse than it is, I think we're built out, but how about another study?
Mr. Brown?
Couple of weeks ago, I had the pleasure of taking, driving to an LAX. Four-lane, five-lane, six-lane traffic, and I'm still stopped. Okay? So, I'm not sure a bypass or a four-lane road going through our neighborhood is the answer, but, well, I was sure glad to leave the LA area and be back here. It wasn't a bad deal. Somebody said, well, don't you have traffic up there? So, my idea of traffic is trying to get around a slow trailer on the 154. Okay? And that's about it. Coming through town, I think we can, well, first of all, we're very limited as to what we can do, because that is the state highway, it's Highway 246, and there's not a lot we can do without the blessings of Caltrans and the state of California. But I think what we can do better is actually time the pedestrian traffic and make it a little more compliant with the flow of traffic at peak hours and other sources. That would be my recommendation, but I don't think a bypass, I don't think wider lanes are in our near future.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you. We really only have one way in and out of this, in Solvang, going east and west. I don't believe that widening streets or finding a bypass is really going, is going to happen. We don't really have alternative traffic solutions. It seems like a lot of the local traffic will bypass Mission by going either north on Fifth and Laurel, or going south Fifth and Oak Street. So, what I think would be, because that's happening, I think what would be a focus, and that is, a lot of that is in District Three, is to have better solutions for those corridors and having bike paths and having proper sidewalks on Fifth. I've seen the traffic there, I've seen how dangerous it can be when people are walking, and there's so much traffic going that way, because they are going to avoid Mission. So, I don't know if I have an answer for an alternative solution. I don't believe that anybody down near the riverbed and in that area want to have traffic diverted there, so I think it would be really important to try to fix some of the areas on Fifth, to have more sidewalks and bike paths for our local traffic.
Yeah, thank you. I'm really anxious to get a look at the traffic study that was just conducted, and I believe it's complete. The assessment should include some perspective on left turns on 246, which are going to, in my opinion, create some difficulties and perhaps some more danger on a very important thoroughfare for us. Also, there have been some great ideas come from the residents that I've talked to around what we could be doing. Better coordinated signals, better, there was a, two, a couple who worked for the Sheriff's Department, both in Solvang and in Buellton, who had the idea of us hiring contracted traffic coordinators on either event days or highly-traffic days or highly-traffic times. These might be crosswalk coordinators or traffic facilitators, which I think is a good idea, and someone very close to me get caught in the city of Solvang for an hour on Fourth of July evening just to cross town. So, for special event evenings, we could do, or days, we can accelerate throughput of traffic. Also, I don't hear often enough us talking about the San Ynez Valley Transit and its use, or emphasizing and promoting its use, especially in peak hours, or especially for certain types of riders, perhaps high schoolers and so forth, when traffic is excessive at 3:00 in the afternoon. And I know there are quite a few community members who are interested in speed bumps on places like Vibe.org, where, you know, the offloading of the traffic burden really needs to be addressed, and neighborhoods that normally are typically on a quiet hour are very peaceful. So, it's something we need to get on, and I'm looking forward to reading that study.
Okay, this will be the last question before the summary that each candidate will do, and we'll begin where we started, with David Brown, starting us off. What will you be looking for in the new city manager who will need to be hired?
Don't look at me, Brad. I don't know if you know, Brad is here in the audience, and he's our interim manager, and pulled him out of retirement to give us some operational directions during the absence. Filling that position, I think there's a lot of qualified people that can do it. A search committee would be the right way to go about it, and the person I would be looking for would be one that can build a team. The city itself is a team of people, from public works to city clerk, to traffic and janitorial, that is a team, and that person needs to be a team builder, somebody that can delegate, somebody that can be astute with the budget and keep that budget in line, and somebody with the patience of Job to work with five people on the board. So, to have a boss, five bosses and one individual to orchestrate all of those visions and directions, he needs to be, he or she needs to be ambidextrous. So, that would be the type of person I'd be looking for, that executive.
Ms. Smith?
Well, it would be nice to find a city manager with some experience, definitely some leadership skills, and I agree with Mr. Brown that they should be able to build a team. I think they could take a lot of advice and instruction from Brad, he's got a lot of experience. Search committee sounds like a great idea. I think we need to put together some people that really know what we need for the city. I think some flexibility and definitely some patience, and I think a good sense of humor. And as you said, we're going to have some people, they have to deal with five of us on the city council, but I would certainly hope they would take some instruction from Brad, he's done such an incredible job.
Ms. Arona?
Thank you. I think the city manager position is a very senior role and very critical role for the city of Solvang, so I think the search needs to be pretty thorough and diligent. Here's what, the list of criteria that I would prioritize, needs to be deeply experienced in managing cities like Solvang or city manager in a prior capacity, and a very strong administrator who can manage staff, a multipurpose, multi-departmental staff, and motivate staff to handle really some complex challenges. Part of that has to include financial acumen, ability to really detail a, you know, long general plan, documents that can be representative of what the city, our city aim and mission and objectives. And then finally, importantly, some creative thinking and willingness to be transparent at all times. It is a, it's a community job essentially, and that makes it a rare, a rare individual. And it sounds like we've got a great assist from Brad who can help us define and find the right skilled individual.
Mr. Clark?
As far as city manager goes, we're between a rock and a hard place. When Brad departs after his 955 hours, we're going to, in most city staff works, you hire a headhunter that finds seven or eight warm bodies to throw at you that couldn't find work somewhere else, and then you're going to interview them. And that five people who are elected have, maybe some have no degrees in business administration or city administration or public administration, have no degrees in finances, and we're going to pick the guy to run this city. And I own this too, folks, because I was on a bad council and a pretty okay council, and we went through four city managers. And if a corporation had four CEOs in five years, they'd fire the board. Well, I'm on the board. There was mistakes made. You've got to, the dilemma you have in Solvang is that you're going to find somebody that is as smart as Brad, and is going to move here for $170,000 a year, when most city managers are making 250 to 400. Okay? And they're going to come to a city that's already had four city managers in four years. It's the most important decision this next council can make, is the next city manager. And I'm really, when I heard that Brad was coming back, I was so pleased, because I would lean on him more than anybody for the type of person that would be a fit. With the previous city manager, I, seeing it was not warm and fuzzy, but I don't think that's somebody's responsibility. I've worked for a lot of people in my life, and not everyone was the warmest and fuzziest person, and it shouldn't be a popularity contest or how nice you are. I want somebody that knows their business. You've got four or five elected people that really want a popularity contest, and then we're picking someone to run a city with a budget like this and that affects 6,000 people. I would lean on Brad, and I, I'm not a big fan of headhunters, so if there's another route, something to be discussed further. Thank you.
Okay, and now we come to the part of our meeting where we ask each candidate to have two minutes to present their concluding statement. And this time, we'll begin with Ms. Smith.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for participating in this forum, especially a great thanks to the League of Women Voters of Santa Maria, to Virginia, to WeWatch for sponsoring it. Really shows how much you care about this town, how much you care about our city, and so I think it's wonderful that you're all here. I have spoken with many of you, and I've really appreciated those conversations and the current concerns that have been expressed and your thoughts. What concerns you concerns me. I want to be the voice on this city council. I have no special interests, I have no hidden agenda, I care for you. I want to make sure that all the voices in my district are heard. You have expressed the need for affordable housing, for building proposals that always include housing for residents and workers. You've expressed the importance of clean and reasonably priced water. I promise, if I'm elected, seriously, if I'm elected, I will do my due diligence and thoroughly research all projects and issues that are presented to the city council. I will make myself available to you to discuss anything you want to discuss. I've got all my information, phone numbers, you can reach me any way. I'm running for city council for you, to be your voice. I don't have all the answers, obviously. I'm learning so much in this whole process, and it's amazing, it's wonderful, it's exciting, and I'm so glad to be a part of this, but I think we can work together and come up with the solutions, and we can do that through communication, some compassion, some patience, and some open-mindedness. My diverse background and employment have prepared me for the many duties and responsibilities that are necessary to serve as your representative on the city council. So, I really hope to have your vote, and I really appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Ms. Arona?
Thank you. I'd like to thank Susan and Virginia, the Thania Church, and Susan Williams, and all the organizers, and the community that's come out to listen to us tonight and help you determine how to vote in November. It's really an important process, but more importantly and more rewarding for probably all four of us is to have the community engage and participate in the process and communicate with us and tell us what you're thinking. I feel that Solvang is a very special city. It's truly a special place for, hopefully, it's my last stop, and hopefully, it's a place for you all to raise your families, build a business, welcome visitors, and maybe even have your kids stay and raise their families too. Since it's such a great place to live, I want to work to maintain Solvang as the great place, affordable place, safe place to live. And I think that there are, we proved that it's an attractive place for visitors too, especially post-COVID. We had the highest occupancy rates, as the travel revenge was our reward. I think we need to figure out how we sustain that. But with 1.5 million visitors per year to 6,000 residents, permanent residents in the city of Solvang, really have to get residents advocacy and voice. That's what I'd like to do, is be your representative and do that work for you. I'm asking for your vote and your support to let me do that job.
Mr. Clark?
Well, thanks for having me, everybody, and thanks for being here. The way the question is phrased is, why should voters cast their ballots for you? And that's not for me to decide. I work real hard, I think I bring a lot of experience to the council. If you vote for me, that's wonderful. If you would like somebody else better than me, that's okay too. The sun will still come up tomorrow, Solvang will still be here, I'll still have a job, but I really like to serve, and so, it's just a matter of, you've seen me for four years, if you like the job I've done, vote for me. If you don't, then don't. And I'm okay with either way, so it's all good. But I've had a really good time for the last four years. It's been rough at times. It's a lot of fun going to meetings where there's no protesters outside anymore, and I appreciate that, it's made me appreciate this new council more. I think I bring some experience to the council, which isn't saying much, folks, because I've been here four years. We've had a lot of experience on this council for years, and that's probably one of the problems that we get into, but if you'd like me, vote for me, if you don't, that's okay too. Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Thank you very much for being here tonight. Thank you to Susan and Virginia inviting us and putting this on, and this is put on by the community, and of which we all represent and are part of, and it's that fabric of Solvang and the valley that I love, I've been here for over 30 years, and, it sure seems like it, but it's home, and you take care of the places where you live, and that's my objective. I also, I'm very transparent, and I want, my phone number is 805-686-2321. It's been that number for a long time. If your question didn't get answered, if you have another question, please feel free to call me. This is my first introduction to politics, but it's not my first rodeo. I've done the business side, I've prepared budgets, I've balanced budgets, and I've hired and fired more people than I should have, but, so, I'm prepared, I'm ready, and... But so I'm prepared, I'm ready and able, and you have, what comes through the best is that I do love this city and I want what's best for it, and you'll get that. Thank you so much.
And now I would like to call Susan Williams, a who, without Susan, this wouldn't have happened. She and her volunteers have done it all. You just showed up.
Well, thank you, Virginia. I'd like to give a really big thanks to the candidates for taking time out of their busy schedule and coming here tonight so we could meet them, hear their views, see what they're about. I'd like to thank all of you for attending tonight's forum, being interested in meeting the candidates before you vote. That's really important. We are so grateful to have the League of Women Voters of Santa Maria Valley who agreed to come to Solvang to facilitate this event less than a week ago, and WeWatch, who are agreeing to sponsor. I hope that we will see both of these organizations be more active and have more horns. I think it is something that is really needed to have a truly non-partisan event. Bethania Lutheran Church provided their parish hall as a community service, and that is quite a blessing. We are so fortunate to have this parish hall and to have this church agree to do something like this at no cost. My role in this forum was to be an organizer. I heard that there really wasn't gonna be a candidate forum this year, and I thought it was very important, especially since this is the first time we're voting by district. And I have to thank my friends and my family who said, of course, when I asked them for help. There's too many to mention, but I really want to give a shout out to the four people that really made this happen and gave me the support when it meant the most. So during that casual conversation fundraiser about the importance of candidate forums, especially this first year voting by district, Marilyn Coyle, Mary Beth Lee, and Phyllis Martina, without any hesitation said, we can do that. This event would not have happened without their support. So I'd like to thank Mary Beth, who is sitting back there at the table. Phyllis Martina is one of the business trip and she couldn't be here tonight. The other person who gets very special thanks is Ian Jacobson. He is a past president of the Rotary Club of Solvang and coordinator of the Community Services Corps. Having Ian on the committee with his calm demeanor was wonderful. He unhesitatingly agreed to help with whatever was asked and graciously accepted all the changes that he rolled. So many thanks to everybody, I'm glad you came tonight. There is campaign literature at the back that you can pick up on your way out. There is information from the League of Women Voters on the table back there. And I think there's still some more cookies and water, so if you have a chance to speak with the candidates while we clean up the hall.